I now call to order the April 18th, 2022, meeting of the New Caney Independent School District Board of Trustees at 6:00 PM. Let the minutes show that a quorum is present with all members in attendance. Please rise for the invocation to be given by Mr. Mixon and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to be given by Mr. Turner.
To the flag of the United States of America, this is a movement for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, honor the Texas flag, and the allegiance to the誠的 Texas, a white state under God, one of the communities.
Item two on the agenda is recognitions. Dan Carr will present Woodridge Forest Middle School recognitions.
Had to dust it off. I appreciate you all having us. Okay, so this is a recognition of some of my students and some of the faculty and just people that make Woodridge an amazing place. So I just want to share some words that people have written about them and through my observations of them. So first up, I'm going to have Ms. Bells, if you don't mind, come on over here. Ms. Bells is a huge part of her family atmosphere at WFMS. She always has a smile on her face and will go above and beyond for her students. Just as an example, Ms. Bells brought the idea of a student newsletter to me. She gathered a group of students, meets with them a couple of times a month to create a newsletter for the students from the students' point of view. This has been a huge success and we keep getting students asking to help. All this is made possible because of Ms. Bells. She is loved by all her students and the staff. Woodridge Forest would not be the same without you. You challenge our students every day and make learning fun. Thank you, Ms. Bells, for all that you do. Next up is Ms. Irene Garcia de Sanchez. When I took this position this year, I told everyone that I would put my work ethic up against anyone. Little did I know I would meet and be challenged by Ms. Irene. She is a woman of few words, but that is because she is always working. She is the reason that our campus, that is coming up on nine years old, still looks like a new building. She takes pride in her work and sets her standards high. I never have to worry about things getting done as long as Ms. Irene is on the job. Thank you, Ms. Irene, for all that you do for our staff and students at WFMS. You are truly a huge part of the Falcon family. Next up is Ms. Stephanie Nielsen. And there's a smile. Have you ever met a person and wondered why they're happy all the time? This is Ms. Nielsen. She is that person. You will never find her when she is having a bad day. Even the chaos of preparing lunches and feeding over 1,200 students, you will see her smiling. She takes time to talk to students and staff, is always looking for ways to improve on processes, and she will never tell you no. She will put in the extra work for the sake of the students at WFMS. Ms. Nielsen has been in New Caney ISD for many years and held many positions. She worked in all grade levels within New Caney ISD, and we are blessed to have her at WFMS. Thank you, Ms. Nielsen, for making WFMS a better place. One of our student athletes that couldn't be here tonight, but I'm going to read about her anyway because she's a phenomenal person. Avery Evans Pickens, eighth grade student athlete. Avery was nominated as a student athlete for multiple reasons. This athlete has great sportsmanship with respect for her coaches, opponents, and her fellow teammates for whatever sport season she is competing in at the moment. And we're going to pause for two seconds. We're going to rewind and do that all over again. Right on time, girl? Perfect. She also likes to make an entrance. This is Avery Evans Pickens. She was nominated as a student athlete for multiple reasons. This athlete has great sportsmanship with respect for her coaches, opponents, and her fellow teammates for whatever sport season she is competing in at the moment. She is very committed towards practice, games, and other extracurricular activities she is involved in. She is also very honest with her teachers and coaches, classmates, and teammates. Positive attitude and enthusiasm for her sport, both on and off the field or court. She has a very strong work ethic. She will not give up on a task that she is faced with until she is satisfied with the outcome. Avery is the result of the statement, "Hard work pays off." She loves challenges mainly because she knows she's going to win. Next up is Adam Theobald. He is recognized as Arcade Student. Adam is extremely driven and is an amazing student all around. Every time Adam is tasked with a project or an assignment, he uses critical thinking skill and analyzes the problem thoroughly. He is a great representation of Arcade program. Adam is a straight A student and sets high standards for himself. There is no doubt in my mind that Adam will achieve any goal he sets for himself. I look forward to seeing all his accomplishments over the next four years as he enters high school. Adam, thank you for being a great role model and representation of the students at Woodridge Forest. Thank you, bud. Isla Sublon. What can you say about a student that just has got it all figured out? She has never turned down a challenge, and she will always have a smile on her face. She is successful at school and extracurricular activities. She is always working on ways to improve the student body at Woodridge Forest. If you asked any teacher at Woodridge Forest to name a student worthy of an award, you can bet that Isla's name would be mentioned. I've had the honor of watching Isla this year with her friends taking over the job of morning announcements, and they have made it their own. They make me and Ms. Aldana laugh every morning with their humor and the personality that they bring to the announcements. So I want to thank you, Isla, for being just you and setting high expectations for all the students at WFMS and truly doing things the Falcon way. And last but not least, Ms. Aldana. Come on over. Don't be shy. Never been shy in your life. Where would I be without my secretary, Ms. Aldana? As a first-year principal of a building, everything you do is new. All decisions on staffing, budget, student success, and just day-to-day routines. I guess you could say that it's just a little stressful at times. Ms. Aldana never lets me stress, and when I do, she will not let it last long. Ms. Aldana will always find a way to make me laugh or get my ADHD thoughts back on track and make them effective. I always joke around with her, telling her that she is the true boss of the school, even though the staff knows that it's the truth. It is not often that people come to my office wanting to talk to me. They usually stop to ask, "Hey, have you seen Ms. Aldana?" And I tell them, "Hey, I can help you." They usually just give me an awkward look and say, "Yeah, that's all right. We'll email her." When I tell them, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Aldana is a humble person and has never turned down a task. She is always willing to help, always has a smile on her face. She has a true servant's heart and puts people first. She makes sure that everything gets done and holds me accountable. She makes sure that I even eat every day, if that means that she has to stand there and make sure that I eat. She wants me to be at my best. WFMS would not be able to function, and I would be at a loss in my position without you. New Caney ISD is blessed to have a person like her, and I hope and pray that one day she will realize her true value and realize the amazing person that she is. So thank you, Ms. Aldana, for all that you do.
I'm putting in the folder. All right. Good evening. I've been waiting forever to be able to do this, so it's a big deal. Thank you all so much. I get to highlight some of our amazing staff and our students at White Oak Middle School. Our first one's going to be Ms. Rawls. Ms. Rawls teaches seventh grade Language Arts. She has been a teacher for 12 years. When you walk into her classroom, you can see some of the toughest boys dive into a book and get lost. Her students have a love for reading, and she builds incredible relationships and keeps students' needs at the forefront. Earlier this year, as some schools still faced high COVID cases, Ms. Rawls dropped off work at each of her students' homes to ensure they did not fall behind. Ms. Rawls visits her former students at New Caney High School often to ensure they are staying on track and meeting their goals. Everyone needs a Ms. Rawls in their lives. I'm so thankful to have her at White Oak. Thank you. All right. Next, I want to recognize Ms. McCullough. Adriana has served the wonderful students of White Oak in many capacities, most recently as an ELAid. She has a heart of gold and truly is a shining light at White Oak. Each morning, she starts her day greeting students with a big smile and her loud, energetic music blasting from our speakers. She has taken all of our newcomers under her wing because she too remembers walking in their shoes when she first arrived to the U.S. schools at eight years old. She pours herself into her students and builds lasting relationships with the families. I cannot imagine this year without you. I'd be lost. Next, we have our student athlete, Daisy Escamilla. Daisy has been an integral part of our White Oak Girls Athletic Program this school year, competing in all five sports for our eighth-grade teams. She ran cross-country, competed on the A-teams for both volleyball and basketball, helped our track relay teams to many first-place finishes, and currently plays goalie for the soccer team. She is a very hard worker, a great leader to her teammates, and a very coachable athlete. She also does well in the classroom, maintaining all As and Bs throughout the school year. She will no doubt continue her success next year at Porter High School, and we're blessed to have had her at White Oak. All right, next up, Paisley Russell. Paisley Russell is an amazing individual that has a bright future in the CTE department. Paisley has been a hardworking, dedicated student inside and outside the classroom. She has most recently become a member of the Porter Junior FFA, where she has joined the junior livestock judging team. Paisley has helped her teammates place in the top 10 overall at every junior competition this season and will be a great asset as a veteran next year. The CTE department is very proud to have such an outstanding young lady, and we cannot wait to watch her succeed over the next few years. Next up, Emma Baldwin. Emma has been chosen to represent the Fine Arts Department because of her dedication to both band and theater. She has helped a top chair in the Honor Band, clarinet section, for the entire year. Because of her practice and hard work, she earned a spot in the Region Band and also received a Division One on both her solo and ensemble. Emma is very active in theater as well. Having been a part of three plays this year, she received an All-Star cast at pre-UIL and honorable mention for All-Star cast at UIL this year for the play Rest in Peace. Great job. All right, Joshua Dean. Joshua Dean is one of our extolions at White Oak. Joshua takes so much pride into his work. He truly is a perfectionist. What I most love about Joshua is that there's no task too big or small for him. When I first arrived to White Oak, I wanted a lot of things moved around. A lot. I could always count on Joshua's honest feedback, and Joshua made adjustments at the drop of a hat. He never ceases to amaze me. Thank you so much for making our school shine. Last but not least, we have Ms. Aburto Thelma. Thelma is in charge of the cafeteria at White Oak. She is always positive and smiling. Thelma is an incredible leader and builds great relationships with her team, our students, and staff. She is always available when we have to make adjustments. This year, our Child Nutrition Department has faced a lot of challenges with supply and food shortages. Thelma has innovatively provided solutions. She completes such difficult tasks seamlessly and always with a smile. We thank you, Thelma, for your dedication to White Oak. I'm so grateful for the students and staff of White Oak that made it out tonight. A special thank you to their families who also showed up. Thank you so much.
Sir, I'd like to continue a tradition we started last month by having Coach Holly come up in place of Principal Bridget Hiney to introduce some new staff members that are joining the West Fork family.
Good evening. Appreciate you guys having me up tonight. I want to introduce a couple of coaches that we're extremely excited to get over at West Fork High School. The first coach I want to introduce is Mark Dix. Mark has come into us from Atassita High School. Some personal notes, Mark was a very successful swimmer. He's a back-to-back state champion in swimming in 2009, 2010. He also was an All-American swimmer in the 50-yard freestyle and the 100 Butterfly in 2009 and 2010. What a lot of people don't know about Mark is he served as a stunt double on the TV hit show Duck Dynasty. Maybe that didn't happen, but he sure looks like it. But we're very excited to introduce to the board tonight Mark Dix as our first head swim coach and diving coach at West Fork High School. The next coach we'll introduce tonight is Tammy White. Coach White is coming to us from Huffman High School. Although some personal notes on Tammy, she has required over 546 wins in her 21 years as a head coach, which is outstanding. On a personal level, Tammy has been recognized as a nine-time District Coach of the Year and three-times Coaches Association Coach of the Year. Coach White's teams, as a head coach, have made playoff appearances 19 over 21 years coaching. It has a regional tournament appearance six times in those years. We're very, very excited about having Tammy over at West Fork High School to serve as our first head volleyball coach and also assistant campus coordinator. Very proud to present these guys to you tonight. Thank you.
Item four on the agenda is out-of-state trips presented by Ms. Lawls.
Good evening. Thank you for your time this evening. I am here to request approval and consideration for out-of-state trips for three of our CTE groups. One from each high school. Infinity Tapia, Advanced to Nationals. New Caney High School Skills USA Cosmetology, Advanced to Nationals. And Porter High School Engineering Department, Advanced Nationals for Samsung Salt for Tomorrow Contest. I included all of the estimate costs in the board documents. And do you have any questions?
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the out-of-state trip? Motion has been moved and seconded, there being no further discussion of what will be taken. All those in favor, say aye. Closed. Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Item five on the agenda is Pasa Demographic Study Update.
Yes, sir. We've got Chris and Justin with us here tonight from Pasa. They're back again. They have done this report for us before, so excited to see what's coming to the area and hear what they have to say tonight and how we can use that in our future plans. So, Chris, it's all yours.
Okay, great. I've got to find the clicker here. Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Poole. I've got Justin Salhavi here also, and we're going to be presenting. We've been with Population and Survey Analysts now for quite a while, and so we've worked with New Caney ISD several times. We come every few years, try to assess the growth and try to help you guys understand where you're headed and what you might need to be looking at for new facilities. So I mentioned that we've been here several times, but each time we come back, we have to understand, sort of look at the district with new eyes. What has changed since we've been here? And of course, in the last few years, it's been pandemic and then the subsequent housing boom. I mean, who would have thought that we all lose our jobs and have a pandemic and then everybody builds houses at the same time? And so it's been very difficult for us to keep track of. It's something that we are studying constantly, keeps us up at night all over the time. But of course, that impacted you guys and everybody really with employment and with new home construction issues. And so with employment, the Houston area, really, most of the jobs since pre-pandemic have recovered, but there are some areas in Houston that have exceeded where they were prior to the pandemic. And so I think Houston also had that double whammy, a little bit of oil issues at the same time. There were multiple things going on besides just COVID. And so we're looking at employment, but at least unemployment has come down dramatically in the last year. And so all of the factors are pointing in the right direction there. You've got to have a job before you're going to be buying a new home. So new home construction, I mentioned that. It's been extremely robust in the beginning of COVID. Any district in the Houston metro area that had lots available built on them immediately. If they didn't have lots available, then they really, really slowed down, but those lots that were available, they went like hotcakes. And so that's caused also new homes to come onto the market, home values to rise. I know all of you are very well aware of these, how quickly the homes are on the market. But, so we've had to factor all of that in and be aware that that's what's going on, but also understand that home prices are getting really high as a result, and also interest rates may be increasing. And so we just factor all of those sorts of things in, and we're cognizant of all of that, and that's really sort of the environment in which we're working right now. So like I say, we have to look at the district every time with new eyes. We have to understand why would someone come to New Caney instead of going next door and buying a house someplace else? So we have to understand who's here, what the district looks like, and so we measure a lot of these sorts of things. A lot of this data either comes from TEA or it comes from the census, and it's from the American Community Survey. It's not a 10-year census. It's something that's updated annually. So really, the district looks a whole lot like the Houston metro area when it comes to age. It's very similar. And also in median income, it's very similar. The median income here in the district is measured by the ACS was just over $69,000. Economically disadvantaged students, the proportion of economically disadvantaged students in the district is a little higher than the state. I would expect that probably to be coming down over the next few years. Population is relatively similar to the Houston metro area. We're looking at that five to 17, what are the school-age kids look like? And then one thing that's really important here, interesting for us to measure and understand is the travel time to work for the district, because nobody wants to be in the car for very long. And so if they are, then that means they're living where they're living on purpose. They're here because they like the schools. If they're going to drive even a few extra minutes to work, they're here for a reason. And so when we see those median travel times higher than the metro area, we know that there's a reason that the residents are moving here. So these next couple of maps just look a little bit at how is the growth going on in the region? And this is 2015 to 2020 for PEAM's data. The PEAM's data for '21 just came out about 10 days ago, and so we haven't managed to get all of that updated here. So I point that out because this includes fall of 2020, which was highly affected by COVID. And so even when you had a much flatter growth rate in 2020, you still had a, you know, large total for the four years, for the five years' growth area, but 2,400 students that were added in that five-year timeframe. And most of those districts above you continued to grow. Many of the districts in the state did not and in fact saw a decline. And so the fact that you grew at all in 2020 really sort of put you in rarified error across the state. And so even in percent change enrollment, again, up through 2020, almost 18% of the students have come in in that five-year timeframe. That's a lot. It's one in five, of course. And so you can see, though, that that is similar to a lot of the districts in the area. You can see this ring of growth in the Houston area outside the metro. And so those are the ones that are growing very rapidly, and an awful lot of those are our clients, because those are the people that are needing to build new schools. And so we can compare growth here to a lot of the districts that are adjacent and in the Houston area. This shows your annual growth rate. It does go to 2021 because, of course, we can get data from you guys. The reason the previous maps were 2020 is because we couldn't get it from the entire state until the last about 10 days or so. So you can see that in 2020, that growth rate that you guys had, you'd been 4%, 5%, 6%, it flattened out a little bit to the 1%, but it was still growth. And then this year, it's rebounded mightily to that 5.2%. If you just kind of ignore 2020, you can see how it really is continuing on that upward trajectory as many of those students did go ahead and return. This shows it in a little bit different way. This goes back to 1991, '92, and so there have only been a couple of years where the district has had declines, and that was a long, long time ago. That was back, I won't tell you what I was in high school or something. It shows you a little bit of how old I am, but this is everything since I graduated from high school, so that's an awfully long time. And so you can see all of that growth there in the recent years here, which shouldn't be any surprise to you guys. And then you can see just that little bit of growth there in '20 and the big hit there in 2021. And then this next slide, I think, is particularly interesting because it breaks it out by grade group. And so the, you know, the little bit of growth, I'm sorry, a little bit of decline there in the early '90s, like I mentioned, but the one that is, of course, of note is 2020, that orange bar that dives south there is the loss in elementary students. And so we saw that universally, kindergarten, first grade, a little bit of pre-K, and then a lot of times, oftentimes, if they changed in middle school in sixth grade, we would see a dip below what we thought should have been there in sixth grade and ninth grade sometimes. Largely, the secondary students were unaffected, but if there was going to be any dip anywhere, it was going to be right in those transition years. But it was elementary students across the board that just didn't show up, were homeschooled, taught by parents, something like that. And so you can see quite a bit of rebound there in 2021. And then the last slide here before I turn this over to Justin is a look at kindergarten and live births. And so it's a very difficult thing to project kindergarten students. And so one of the things that we do is we get the births by zip code of the birth mother, and we can get that data from the state, only for a few years, you know? But then we take that and we move it forward five years and compare that to the kindergarten enrollment. And so that's the past there. It really has trended quite closely together over the last while. We're seeing it flatten out. We're seeing it flatten out in a lot of places. Just births are coming down a little bit, but that's not the only way you guys get kindergartners. You know, sometimes, very often, people will move in when they have no children into a new home, but sometimes they move in when they have two-year-olds also, and so they're not going to show up there, and yet their kids will go ahead and come into kindergarten. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Justin to talk about housing, and then I'll talk a little bit in the future about what that means for facilities for you all.
All right. So that was a little background. Housing is, of course, where the majority of your growth comes from. We can't forget just the new housing, but also housing that's recently been moved into. That can see, we can see gains in those areas as well. People don't always start out with student-aged children, just like Chris alluded to. So when we look at housing, we actually have one employee who goes on the ground, and he drives neighborhoods about the same time we attain your student data. So that way, we can know how many students are living in every occupied home. We know how many homes at a given point in time are occupied and also under construction so we can kind of keep up with the pace of development for this study. So that occupied count is so important. It helps us understand how to project forward, because every neighborhood is unique and has a different student yield, if you will. So along with that, we also take a look at property that isn't developing yet. We know of all your active developments and everything that's coming online soon, what we don't know is in, say, three to six years, what will happen? We have to make some assumptions to keep your growth moving forward. If we did not, you would see your growth drop, and we'd be doing you a disservice. So we know some landowners, they may be actual investors or developers who already own land. So we have to be cognizant of that and keep that growth moving forward. The growth's not going to just stop just because an active development stopped today. So with those thoughts, let's take a step back five years. So this chart is showing you growth, those blue bars are your actual number of housing starts since about 2017 or so. And look at that. It's been an upward trajectory. You can see the boom in 2020 and 2021 that Chris talked about. In some districts, not yours really, but we actually under-projected 2020 by 30%, 40%. No one saw the low mortgage rates coming back in 2019. And so that has actually caused a little weirdness with projections, you know? COVID caused a downward trend, but some of these mortgage-induced housing booms have caused it to go up. But not every home is getting students. You may have heard of investors buying You may have heard of investors buying a lot of homes. So we've been noticing that. Some neighborhoods that really should have more students than them just don't. We think there might be a lot of younger folks moving in, now able to afford some of these houses. So a lot of things to think about, but you're following the metro area trend line, which is that red line there. The metro area has seen a record-breaking number of housing starts, over 40,000 now. So it may seem counterintuitive, but one of the first things we look at is where we can't build homes. And so that's exactly what this map is showing you. Those blue squiggly lines, those are floodways in your district, moving northwest to southeast. We know homes won't be built there. You can't really see them too well, but the floodplains are surrounding them in a little hatch mark. You really can't build much in those either. They can do some mitigation, developers can. But we have to be cognizant of that and think about it. And then also, you have a couple of major parks in your district that won't have homes and some industrial and commercial areas as well. So we like to exclude areas first, these inhibitors, before we actually start looking at where homes can go. We break your district up into planning units. You may be familiar with these. Every housing projection and student projection that you find in our report will be broken out by these planning units. We essentially explode your attendance zones, and so all of your attendance zones can fit, or all of, some of these planning units fit perfectly into your attendance zones. And these planning units, which Chris will talk about more later, they help us create future catchment areas for site selection. So I've listed here three regions of your district that I think your short-term housing fits nicely into: west, northeast, and south. And so let's talk about that for a split second. There's a different dynamic happening in all these regions. So in your western, northwestern part of the district, that's where a lot of the growth is going to be. It's where we have a lot of large housing tracts being developed currently in their infancy, really. We have the Highlands, we have Maple Heights, the old airstrip off 99, and a new development called The Landing off Campbell. Is it 1485? It's close to. That should have somewhere around 500 lots. So those are three really large developments with a lot of lots coming, and they're all brand-new. So we have to think about that in terms of going from not many students to a lot in the short term. And those are all currently developing. In the northeast, we definitely still have Tavola Building. Tavola's picked up a lot over the last couple of years. And one reason, and I was talking to the admin about this earlier, you have to think of your districts that you're adjacent to. Umbel, in a very, very short period of time, will be almost completely built out. They have had rapid, rapid growth in the Beltway 8 corridor, where all their remaining land was, and it has rapidly built out. Same thing with the southeastern portion of Conroe ISD, around the Grand Parkway, building out rapidly. As those areas build out, the next place to come is New Caney and Splendora. So that's one reason, outside from the low mortgage rates, that you've been seeing a little bit more housing growth. Roman Forest has also seen new housing. D.R. Horton's moved in, purchasing old lots in the western side of Roman Forest. So those are things we've included in our report. In southern New Caney ISD, you don't have a lot of large land tracts left, but you do have a lot of small pieces of land, infill development with apartments and other small single-family developments is happening. These neighborhoods I listed there are a couple of the largest. Peppervine, right off 59. We've got North Park South on Sorders. That's about to get going as well. It's a new section. And Royal Pines, which is where Westlake Houston terminates, just at the county line, was just purchased by Ashton Woods. So you'll have about 400 lots. They already started plating with the city of Houston. So that'll be coming up in the next year or so. And everywhere I've talked about, there is listed here, the green hotspots here, these are the actual developments. So you can see they're mostly up in the north and the west, and all those little scattered infill sites in the south are continuing to develop and build out. So that's where your growth has been. These are the ones I've mentioned, The Landing in Maple Heights and the Highlands in the west. Those are really your big guys that are bringing a lot of new development. And we can't forget things like Riverwalk continuing to build out as well. So when we look forward, thinking more towards, say, 2026 to 2030, 2031, we need to think about these areas highlighted in orange. Remember I mentioned, we can't just forget about, you know, what's after these current developments? So a lot of this land shown here in orange, well, all of it, is undeveloped for the most part. There are a couple of really large tracts, the Ben Chang Tracts in the northwest, over 1,500 acres or more, that could develop one day. He's very slow to sell land off. He also owns a lot of land in Splendora ISD. That's sitting there now being surrounded by new housing developments. The Gunaganti Track now has access, 99, which is, you know, imminently going to open, now bisects that property. And that family has sold off now everything south of the creek, Royal Pines being the latest tract to sell off that I mentioned, sold to Ashton Woods. So that tract is really now being primed for a developer to purchase it. It's just a matter of when. And so the trails on the far eastern side, majority of that development is in Huffman ISD, but there is a small sliver in your district that could have a few hundred homes in it if they decide to. And then, of course, the Highlands is still planned to go across the north side of 99. So these have all been projected for later in the projection period to develop. Looking out 10 years, over 22,000, closer to 23,000 homes are projected to be occupied. And now a home can be anything from a single-family home in the Highlands or Kingwood to an RV in an RV park. So we've broken it out here. There are some manufactured housing communities still being built, very small ones still peppered around the district, and some infill of manufactured housing as well. And a lot of multifamily now coming online. Most of your multifamily is still occurring in the 59 corridor and now in Valley Ranch quite a bit more. They've got some more planned as well. So that's really where it's focused. So when we talk about all this new housing, we also have to think about, you know, who lives in them? If it's an active adult community, which is restricted to 55-plus, we know the Highlands has a section of that planned. We know there will be no students in those homes. So we have to think about that and remove children. We have some apartments that are senior, senior living, too, that won't have kids. But overall, in your district, all homes, everything from a manufactured home to a single-family home in Kingwood, has on average .6 students per home. And generally, a lot of the new housing in this district is generating between about .4 and .55 students per home. Manufactured housing generates a little more, but multifamily generates quite a bit less. And that's very typical. In fact, your multifamily housing generates a lot fewer students than most school districts in suburban Houston. The average is about .35. You're only generating .2 for every unit. A lot of that has to do with the number of bedrooms. In the Kingwood area, there just aren't as many bedrooms per unit. So we think about that as we're projecting students. We have to assign values to every neighborhood. Every neighborhood generates, you know, either closer to one student per home or far fewer, like zero, if you're talking about these senior housing communities. So when we put all this together, we come up with scenarios of growth. And there are a lot of factors that can determine how low or high you go. Looking 10 years out is not easy. As you know, five years from now, those students aren't even born yet who are entering kindergarten. So we have to think about, a lot of what we're doing here is what we know today. We don't know what's going to happen five years from now. You know, who knows what the economy will be like? But that moderate growth line, that dotted line, is basically a most likely with what we know today and what we believe is going to happen, that's the trajectory. You're a very straightforward growth trajectory. I'll tell you that. A lot of our districts that are building out, say, Klein, a great example in this neck of the woods, has not necessarily a straight trajectory. In fact, it can dip, is dipping, because they're experiencing losses from other areas like charter schools. And that's what you can think about with that low-growth scenario. When you look 10 years out, you could be several thousand students lower if, say, for example, IDEA or International Leadership School comes in and plops a school down in Valley Ranch. We don't know that that's happening today, but if that happens three, four, five years from now, you could be looking at that lower-growth scenario. One thing we've learned, well, first of all, we know that IL Texas is building some K8s and a high school in Cleveland ISD. The access to get there isn't amazing from this district, even though it's distant, as the crow flies, it's not too far away. But what we know is that most charter students, we've looked into this, we have some pretty reliable data from the state, most live within about a three-to-four mile radius of a campus. And then you also have to consider drive times and all that. But that's why you really haven't seen a lot of charter school student, I guess, students leaving for charters. You only have about 70 estimated to live here that attend charters. They're not close. They're pretty far away. So we do anticipate a little bit of loss from these IL schools in Cleveland, but not a lot. Most will come from Cleveland ISD. Again, these are the factors that can alter that growth line. You think about that higher-growth line, if we're thinking out 10 years, reaching that closer to 27,000-student mark, you could be thinking, one of these large tracts that currently has no land plan, isn't even owned by a developer, maybe gets purchased in the next year or two and ends up building out throughout the majority of this period. We just don't know that that's going to happen today. So you have two really large land tracts remaining in this district. If one of them starts to develop in the next year or two, you might be looking at that higher-growth scenario. We've already factored development in those areas just later in the projection period, because we don't know when it could happen. So breaking out the moderate-growth scenario from the low and the high, this is, these are the numbers. I mean, it's a lot of numbers here, but just know, this year, you grew by about 850 students, and that's at snapshot, which is in October. Every one of these projection numbers is for snapshot, the official TEA snapshot date. You may have gained more than that. Your enrollment could be higher. I don't know. I haven't checked in lately. But we're anticipating another bump next year. And that's because we still believe there could be anywhere from 100 to 200 students not in school. These students who didn't show up due to COVID, a lot of those never lived here before. You have to consider people who have moved in in the last two years that actually didn't show up because of COVID, too. So when we look at your housing and what you should have gained over the last couple of years, you didn't quite hit that mark. So there could be still some out. So we've increased next year a little bit, 60% return of students who haven't actually shown up. That's what we did. So that's why 2023 goes down just a little bit. And then throughout the projection period, we're really not seeing a big change from this 700 to 850-student growth mark every year. With these new developments coming online, you should be able to maintain that, barring anything unforeseen. And that's, again, your moderate-growth scenario. So that means going from nearly just over 17,000 students today to about 25,000 students 10 years from now. So with that, Chris is going to come back. She'll talk about how this relates to your actual campuses for a little bit.
Okay, I've just got a couple of slides to wrap up here. So at the end of the day, Justin said a lot, but what you're really interested in is what that means for your schools and your kids, right? And so what this last couple of slides shows is the projections by attendance zone. So he's referenced the planning units, and they're, planning units are scattered in absolutely everything you have in front of you that I know you guys are going to go home and read tonight before you go to bed. And so those planning units are our organizational tool. And so for each one of those planning units, we have taken, we've geocoded your students, so we know where they live, these little dots all over the map. And we take them and we age them forward. In some cases, you have a big kindergarten class and a small fifth grade. In some cases, it's just the opposite. What happens is those students move on through. So we've taken your students, we've geocoded them, we have aged them forward, we have added on students from housing, like we've talked about, and like Justin has just talked about, overlaid economy and all of these sorts of things. So for each one of those planning units now, we have shown in the binder the projections by grade group for each year of the 10 years by a planning unit. So for planning unit number one, we can pop it up and say a certain number of elementary students next year, and a certain number in '26, and a certain number in '31. And so what we do then is we take those planning units and join them back together into your current attendance zone. So that's our starting point, okay? But then the other thing is, we can take those and we can break them apart, because at the, what you guys need to understand is when and where you may need new facilities. And so a lot of times, administration will come back to us and say, we're looking at a site here, what might it look like that? Would this work, or would a different one work better? And so we can manipulate the data like that. But in the report there that's in front of you, what we are looking at is just the students by current attendance zone. And this is geocoded student population, so that is where the kids live. And we know that they are, that there's going to be some element of transfers, transfers in and out. And so that's the last column there. We know the minute, though, we measure the transfers, they change, because it's a teacher's child, or it's, you know, for any of these various reasons, special programs, and we know that's constantly changing. So what I'm showing you here for the elementary kids is just the geocoded students. We have to keep the transfer part in mind. And I've highlighted it in a couple of ways. In the areas that are sort of that light orange or light tan, that's where the students, where the enrollment is starting to go above 100% of capacity. And so that means you can handle that. I know most people don't like portable buildings, temporary buildings, but in a growth, in a high-growth district, sometimes that is the best way to handle growth until you can get another school on the ground. So, but at some point in time, you may be able to put portable buildings out there and maintain that 22-to-1 ratio, but it's, you've got to bring those kids in, and they got to eat lunch in the cafeteria, and they got to go to the library. And so we've started by highlighting at 120% of capacity. We highlight everything there in yellow. And so a lot of our clients will tell us, that's really sort of the tipping point where they start having lunch really early in the morning or really late in the afternoon. And so it doesn't mean that you have to have a school on the ground at 121% of capacity, but that's just where, you know, you really need to be paying attention here. And I know you guys know this, you've been very good about keeping schools on the ground and keeping the plan rolling. So what we've got here, though, is we've got Crippin', of course, we've got Dogwood, Oakley toward the end of the projection period, if some of that area goes ahead and does build out, and Tavola there, all in yellow at the end of the projection period. And so we can see that Crippin', we could relieve with a new school in the west. I think that's sort of in the plans, and everybody is on board with that, and the district has a site. And so then on the east side, though, we can see that some of those others that I mentioned, Dogwood, Tavola, and Oakley, could be relieved by a new school somewhere in the northeast or maybe east-central portion of the district. But at the end of the projection period, even though those may take sort of the yellow highlights off the screen, you do still need to pay attention to some of the others. You know, we could be looking at Porter with over 1,000 students, and New Caney Elementary, almost that many. So there will still be pressure in some other areas, areas that you'll have to continue to watch, maybe affect that with a little bit of rezoning and be looking for some other sites there. But this is how it breaks down. Good news is, there's no yellow there for tomorrow, okay? And so that means the district has done a good job in managing the growth, but there are things to be handled here in the next several years. And then for secondary, again, for the middle schools, what we're showing is the geocoded student population. And so we do have a little yellow, again, nothing, nothing at all, actually, no color shown in 2022, 23, so that's excellent to realize. We are showing ultimately some pressure at Kefir Crossing and White Oak. And so that could be relieved with a middle school in the north, an additional one there in the north. But then even after you build that, you can compare Pine Valley and Woodridge Forest to their capacities and realize that in 2031, even though they're not turned to color, they would be full, completely full. So the cycle is going to keep going until you guys are built out. You know, you build a school and take care of some things and move on to the next. And so that's really sort of what this is showing. Then at the high school level, I broke my own rule, and this is not just geocoded students. You guys are starting the West Fork with just ninth grade, and so there's that grandfathering in there. in there. But then also, right now, you've got from both of the facilities, from Porter and from NCHS, you've got a couple of hundred students leaving and going to, say, the early child, the early, the early college, the early college high school and some of the other things, the great programs that you guys have. So now attending that, so you've got some students peeling out and attending these schools that don't have an attendance zone. And so we've tried to account for both of those sorts of things. However, when you look at West Fork and you look at Porter, all of the kids out of Porter that are currently going elsewhere, I'm still showing coming out of Porter because we don't yet know how many of them are going to come out of West Fork. So there's that little caveat in there, just realize that there's going to be, once that facility opens, it will change the transfer patterns. But with all of those words to say, what you're looking at here is ultimately, you will be needing a naturally additional space. And New Caney High, this does include the annex here. And so toward the end of the projection period is when we would be looking at sort of hitting that 120% of capacity. So you've got some time, but, you know, not a ton of time because the land keeps getting more expensive and the kids keep coming. So this is what we're looking at here, additional high school in the north and both of those secondary facilities in the later part of the projection period. And with that, we'd like to open it up to questions. I know I've seen a lot of flipping through the binder and lots of turning pages.
So when you're determining those numbers for West Fork, who's determining those, those numbers for attendance? You were running Porter at 1,200. Who determines that number?
So that was based on how many kids we're expecting to live in the attendance zone?
But there, rezoning can be done at that point to adjust those numbers to ensure...
Sure. That is based on your current, that's based on your current zone?
Zoning can be changed to adjust those numbers to ensure everybody's...
Absolutely. Absolutely. So that's based on your current, so that gives you an idea of when that sort of zoning or a new facility would need to come into play.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
All right, item six on the agenda is open forum. The board will now hear comments from those persons who have signed up to speak. I have to read a statement. The board encourages comments from citizens of the district or employees. Anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or representative of a group, may do so at this time. The board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than five minutes. Remember, the board may not discuss any issues that are not posted on our agenda. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during this meeting. In addition, the board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administrative level a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concern. Policies are available on the district website, www.nucanyisd.org. Dr. Yvonne Martinez.
Congratulations on the teachers currently at Porter High School, especially some of the first-year Porter High School AP teachers. As a parent, I have seen the work that they provided to their students, and we are hoping to see positive AP results after the May testing. One positive already is the fact that we've increased the number of students who will be taking the test. Generally speaking, with the great resignation, teachers have been leaving the profession or moving to other, to other areas to teach or serve as an administrator. For Porter High School, and this data comes from the Texas Academy Performing Report. So for Porter High School, 2020, 2021, 50% of the students were considered at risk for dropout. And then we have 52.5% of the students who are considered economically disadvantaged. Class of 2022, 93.6% of those students did receive their high school diploma. And then for grades nine through 12, the dropout rate was approximately 0.9%. At Porter High School, the student population is 60.7% Hispanic. And in comparison to other schools and the state, we do have a high chronic absenteeism. From listening to the report that was just given, one of the things that I did notice was that 21% of our students actually receive a bachelor's degree compared to the Houston area at 34%. Within Porter High School, on the teachers, 80.7% of the teachers are classified as white, 15% Hispanic. Today, I actually come before the board to ask that you consider future teachers and administrators who may have similar backgrounds to the students at Porter High School. The principal make recommendations and the board hires. We want those teachers and administrators who see the importance of educating and encouraging our Porter High School students. A good teacher should be good regardless of ethnicity and background. But a conversation can be more positive when a teacher understands a student's background. And so one of the things that I'm asking as I come before the board, which I've spoken to the teachers about it, is that as we're hiring teachers and administrators for our school district, ideally, we should consider some of those teachers who come from similar backgrounds as our students because the conversations can vary when you actually go into a room. And I'm not, as I said here, I'm not saying that a teacher is good because they look like a student, but sometimes a teacher is good because they understand the background from which that student came. And one of the things that I think is very important is that if we're looking to not have 50% of our students considered to be at risk for dropout and actually try to drop that number, a part of that is having an individual or especially a teacher who can speak to them because of the background from which they came. I believe that to be an honest and accurate request, and there are various studies out there that show the, the same to be true. As we are now going in the West Fork, we, of course, have moved some of our teachers and administrators from our other schools into West Fork, and that's fully understandable for stability's sake, so they can recognize a face. But I also think as we're looking to bring those new teachers and new administrators into Porter High School, we need to go beyond just our general scope area. And that's all I have to say for today. So, thank you.
Item seven on the agenda is closed meeting. The board will now meet in closed meeting under the authority of Texas Government Code 551.074 for the purpose of personnel matters, Government Code 551.071 for attorney consultation, and Government Code 551.072 for deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Any action as, as a result of this closed session discussion will take place after the board reconvenes in open meeting. The time is 6:56. The board reconvenes, or the board ended its closed meeting at 7:53 PM and will now reconvene in open session. Item eight on the agenda is reports and proposals of board members.
So we, on the construction committee, we had a meeting on March 22nd to go over multiple topics. West Fork High School, obviously, is top of awareness. We're sure doing the best we can there. So the GC is focusing on the completion of classroom spaces to be ready for the staff and students as a result of planning between district and the West Fork High School staff. So, you know, we focused on working through West Fork's, you know, as we, that thing's coming pretty quick here. And then moved into Porter Elementary replacement update. Porter Elementary's site has been cleared, obviously, we've seen that. The district is currently working with TechDOT to plan the roadwork to be completed on Loop 494. The campus and district leadership are now, I mean, are also going through processes of rebranding, school colors and mascot to be used in the new building. And then the final thing we worked on, which is our big one, future bond program. The district will be receiving, again, we did receive that tonight from, from Passa on a, the demographic report and the data along with the start of the development of the next bond program. The district has also identified several facilities that need to be included in the next bond program as we move forward. And then we will remeet again in June of 2022.
Item nine on the agenda is the consent calendar, consisting of consideration of minutes, consideration of finance reports, consideration of purchasing reports, consideration of personnel reports, consideration of, to notify commissioner of intent to approve and renew District of Innovation Plan 2022 through 2027, and consideration of Middle School Course Guide. And on, we're going to remove 9D4 at this time and vote on it separately. Are there any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar? Motion has been moved and seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. The motion is approved. At this, now we're going to discuss, vote on consideration of personnel reports, 9D4, consideration of rehiring paraprofessional and auxiliary employees for the 2022, 2023 school year. Are there any questions, further discussion? Mr. Mixon is abstaining from this vote. Is there a motion? There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Motion is approved.
All right, it's always a pleasure to introduce some new faces and some new places in our district. We have some of those tonight in attendance. So going to start off with our new director of facility planning. He is no stranger to the district, but he's going to be in this new role currently as our director of transportation. That is Mr. Richard Ressler. He's back in the back. Again, he is our new director of planning. And stepping up to fill the director of transportation spot is his current assistant director of transportation, Ms. Barbara Rendon, right there at the back. And then it's always great to hire principals in this district that impact our teachers and our students so much. The first one of those tonight is our new principal at the Learning Center. That is Ms. Babs, back there at the back. She is currently an assistant principal at Woodridge Forest, so again, not a stranger, just in a new spot. Sorry, Mr. Clark, we stole her. A new face at New Caney Elementary as their principal is Ms. Sessa. She is coming back home, as she likes to say. She was at Tavola as an AP currently and, and coming back to New Caney Elementary. And then the new principal at Oakley Elementary, she was at New Caney Elementary, is Ms. Angelic. Glad to have her at Oakley and see all the exciting things she's going to accomplish down there. Appreciate y'all stepping up and it's always a great thing when people in our district step up in these roles and, and lead our staff and students. So thank y'all for doing that.
Good deal. Item 10 on the agenda is consider the purchase of a parcel of land related and related improvements consisting of approximately 1.8 acres, more or less located east of Highway 59, west of Loop 494, and along Hammond Drive in New Caney, Texas, to be used for purposes related to a school campus or other district facilities presented by Mr. Calvert.
Yes, sir. This piece of property we are wanting to purchase connects to the Porter Elementary replacement site. It gives us another entrance and exit onto East Hammond versus everybody coming out onto 494.
Any question? Is there a motion?
... improvements located east of Highway 59, west of Loop 494, and along Hammond Drive in New Caney, Texas, to be used for purposes related to a school campus or other district facility, and authorize superintendent or its designee to negotiate and execute a final sale and purchase agreement, as well as any related necessary amendments, closing documents, and other post-closing documents.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Let the record show that's Porter, Texas, and not New Caney, Texas. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion is approved. Item 11 on the agenda is consider and approve StanTech Architecture for Architectural Services to design, construct Phase Two of West Fork High School, presented by Mr. Calvert.
Yes, sir. As y'all saw earlier tonight, the students are going to keep on coming. And so even though West Fork will just open in August, we know that we're going to expand that up to its 5A level, which was the intent all along. And so we are recommending StanTech Architects to do that Phase Two project for us. They are the current architects on Phase One, so looking forward to continuing that partnership with them on Phase Two.
Any question? Is there a motion to approve StanTech Architect, Architecture for Architectural Services to design, construct Phase Two of West Fork High School? Motion has been moved and seconded, being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion is approved. Item 12 on the agenda is consideration of approval of superintendent's employment contract. I'm going to have Mr. Trepp. I make the motion to approve Mr. Calvert's approval of superintendent's employee contract. Is there... All the, okay. The motion has been moved and seconded, being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion is approved. There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 8:02.